Some leadership down here. And some over here on the side.
I'll make the call.
I like that, mate. I call the order of the October 6, 2022, meeting of Mayor and Council. I'd like to call in Pastor Mark Brady with Anchor Faith Church to lead us in prayer. You'd all remain standing for the pledge as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we thank you tonight. We have another opportunity to recognize your lordship and your greatness over all of us, Father, and even more importantly, over this city. Father, we remind ourselves that as we serve the people of this city, we are ultimately serving you, and we want to bring glory and honor to your name and to your kingdom. Father, I thank you for this mayor and for each of our council men and women. I thank you for their leadership, their guidance. And Father, we just pray that your direction, your guidance, and your protection over their lives and, Father, every thought, every intention, every motive that we have, Father, we thank you that we can do it to the best of our ability. Father, we also take the time this evening to lift up Mr. Michael Hampton to you and his family, all his coworkers, and those that he served with and served under. Father, after his recent passing, we have a hole in our hearts and a hole in our city. But, Father, we thank you that your Holy Spirit will guide us and lead us into your supernatural peace that passes all understanding. We once again thank you for this wonderful city. We thank you that your hand is upon it, and as we seek your guidance and direction, we thank you that your blessing will stand over this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Before I move on, I want to do a couple of special recognitions. One, I want to recognize a longtime councilman, Mayor Pro Tem, and state representative who served both our city and our state so well, Ron Borders.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd also like to recognize by them standing a whole bunch of Leadership Lounes youth from the class of 2022. If you would all stand to be recognized. And one of your classmates here for the work session on Tuesday as well. So, thank you. Thank you for your involvement. We're going to move on to item two, awards and presentations. Consideration of the October 2022 Employee of the Month. Josh Hunt and Anitra Riley would join me at the front, please. Josh stared. He'd take his 200 bucks and leave. He ran. I'm telling you, over and above. I was going down Barack Obama right in front of Cracker Good, and a Pepsi truck had dumped half its load on the street. He's out there kicking it all off to the side of the road. He was blocking traffic, and he's over there just kicking away. Again, over and above. We move on to item three, the approval of the minutes. Councils had time to review the minutes from the September 22 regular meeting. Counsel, are there any additions or deletions at this time? Hearing none and seeing none. The minutes are approved by acclamation. We'll move on to a very busy and very exciting public hearing portion of the night. Item 4A is consideration of an ordinance for a conditional use permit for transitional housing facility and an office professional zoning district, as requested by Teach Outreach Ministries. Property is located at 606 South Lee Street. Planning Commission reviewed this request and with four conditions voted 7-0 in favor of Matt Martin will present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Property is located at the southmost corner of South Lee Street in McDougal. It's currently zoned Office Professional or OP. They're seeking conditional use approval for a transitional housing facility. As you see on the zoning map on the screen, you see the zoning pattern that's dominated by R6. You see the subject property is OP. Also, the PEMD zoning across the street, which is also owned by the applicant. Character area is established residential, which is reflective of the dominant residential neighborhood. Aerial imagery, you see a little closer view of the building pattern. You see the rooftops of the subject property. Their refuge center across the street, the church that's diagonally behind to the west, and then rooftops of multiple other houses. The property itself is a single-family dwelling. Throughout most of its history, it's a historic residence, two stories, over 100 years old. I believe a seven-bedroom house originally. Teach has operated there since 2004. They've been using it as part of their ministry operations, sort of as a community center and outreach to the neighborhood, not purely a residential use. Their purpose in asking this is to go back more to residential, but more of a specialized nature. Their letter of intent in your packet describes their history and their proposed use in greater detail, but is to assist some of the homeless families that we have here in our community. Subject property, this is the view from Southeast Street. As you can see, a very nice historic dwelling that's been maintained well. The parking lot and the side yard to the north, this is right at the street corner. Adjacent properties, this is the view looking northward of Lee Street. Straight across the street is the Refuge Center, and then looking southward on Lee Street, further into the neighborhood, and a closer view of the house that's just down the street to the left. Planning Commission reviewed this at their regular meeting on September 26. They found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the conditional use review criteria, which are outlined in your packet, and they're recommending approval subject to four conditions, which are as follows. Number one, approval shall be granted in the name of the applicant only for a transitional housing facility as defined by the LDR, but is not a halfway house nor an open shelter to substance abusers. Maximum occupancy of the facility shall be determined by the fire marshal. Number two, the existing building and the residential character of the property shall be maintained with no major building expansions. Number three, all parking for the facility shall be off-street and continue to be parking optional, or, excuse me, paving optional at the discretion of the city engineer. And lastly, number four, conditional use approval shall expire after one year from the date of approval if no updated certificate of occupancy has been approved for the facility by that date, which means as the change of use for the facility, they've got to go through a plan review process that involves a closer examination of the floor plan. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Matt on this?
I just have the same question I asked. I would like, want to explain to me that a mother with a teenage child cannot stay, but her underage children can stay, and we are having problems with our teenagers now. Why would we separate a mother from her teenage child? That was the only question. I'm not against it. I just want someone to explain that to me.
I think the applicant would be more than happy to explain that and probably some other details as well.
Any other questions for Matt?
Yeah, Matt, just for a matter of interest, what is the best zoning for a transitional home like this?
It is a conditional use in every zoning district where it is allowed. OP is one of the possible districts. It's generally from, I think, OPRP on upward. It is not something where we would even consider in a single-family district.
Any further questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request at this time, please do so and state your name as you do.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening yet. No, not quite. Good afternoon. How are you doing? My name is Elsie Napier. I am the pastor of Teach Outreach Ministries. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have in reference to the request that we're making for the conditional permit. But before I do, I do want to take this opportunity to thank you for accepting the grant committee's recommendations to accept our application earlier in August. Thought about sending a thank you card, but I said, well, it might be best to do it personally. You may not hear thank you enough, but I want to tell you thank you. I do appreciate that. And with that being said, are there any questions?
I believe there are.
I have the same question. From my understanding, Mr. Mark explained to us, Mr. Matt, I'm sorry, explained to us that the mother had a teenage child, and she had three underage. The underage kids could stay there with the mother, but her 16-year-old would have to go someplace else. That way, we were separating a mother from her child. Me being a mother myself, if I had a teenager and three minors, and I needed assistance, and I had to separate my children, that, to me, that would be degrading to the mother of not being able to keep her children together.
I agree with you totally. I'm a mother also, and I would never be separated from my children. I think that statement is kind of erroneous. The school recommended that we focus on children of a certain age, particularly because these families would be living pretty much independently. And their recommendation was that we focus on children because of male and female. Their recommendation that we focus on children that are families of the younger age, because if you start mixing 13-year-olds with 6-year-olds of other families, in their recommendation, that is not a wise thing. And I totally agree with that. So, it's not, that was never our options to divide any family, and that is what our target population will be, is families of children that are under fifth-grade age. So, those families will be together. If there's a family that has a teenager that's 15 or 16, well, that, the center would not be an option for them.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Center would not be an option, and that's the reason, is because it's the recommendation of the school system.
And what school system would be recommended?
We're focusing right now on Valdosta School System, because that was what the greatest need that was presented to us at the time. And we're primarily focusing on those families that are living in hotels, that now they're serving over 300 children in the Valdosta School System, where their parents are considered, a parent is considered homeless.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Napier?
Well, I just want to ask you this, Ms. Napier. With the school systems and all and everything, which is good, maybe we'll narrow it down. Is it more or less like the elementary of those schools or something like that?
Any family that consider, any family of a parent that is mother-only, so, because we're not even targeting the men, we're singling out the single-family-led homes that are considered homeless, and they have children that are under the age, I think it's 11, a fifth grader, that's under the age of 11. We want 11. We want to keep those families together, which means we can't tell you even how many people, because some families, we understand, are living in hotels where there are four children. And so, if you have a bedroom with three beds, and you've got four or five children plus a mother, then that's going to cause to condense the number of people that you can house. So, targeting, it's going to be targeting your elementary, because fifth grade, I mean, my children have been grown, I don't know what. My children have been grown and on their own for so long, but I think elementary is considered fifth grade and under?
Fifth and under.
Right.
Usually about age 11.
11, right. That's the age that I was targeted, 11 years old and under. So, yes, every family would not be a family that would be able to, that we're targeting for the transitional center.
Thank you. I was waiting for that to be explained.
Yeah.
Because I had some...
No, we would never think of separating a family. That would never be our intentions in any way.
Thank you for explaining it to us.
Okay. Thank you for the question.
Any further questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Good luck. Is there anybody else at this time that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the council for action.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a motion that we do approve the transitional home with all the conditions as stated.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comment? All in favor? Show of hands. Good luck, Ms. Napier. Move on to item B, consideration of an ordinance for a conditional use permit for a light manufacturing facility in a highway commercial zoning district, as requested by Ron Borders. The property is located at 415 West Hill Avenue. Matt Martin will again present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Property is located about a block and a half west of the Oak Street intersection. As you can see on the zoning map, it's surrounded by commercial zoning, mostly highway commercial, and it is just east of where Central Avenue and Hill Avenue join back together. Character area is Community Activity Center, which explains the dominance of commercial zoning in the area. Aerial imagery, you see where the road pattern comes together. That is the Valdosta Daily Times Publishing House to the north across the street, and also the Georgia Beer Company off diagonally to the east-southeast, which used to be the city's waterworks building. Fire station, municipal court also nearby. As we talked about in the work session, they're requesting conditional use for light manufacturing, which I described as a very broad category that is a conditional use in CH, because it simply is a matter of a scale and a location. Manufacturing is divided into light versus heavy. The heavy manufacturing, certainly in industrial zoning. Light manufacturing, we typically see in M1 zoning, but sometimes a smaller operation that is a little more of a commercial scale or intensity, sometimes you'll see in a CH. Examples of some of the neighboring uses that also fit in that category would be the publishing house across the street, also the microbrewery one block to the east. In their case, it is light manufacturing because of the type of work that they do. It's six employees. They work with small machines, a little bit of noise, but it's all inside a building, and retrofitting and using an existing building. Proposed machinery looks something like this. These are pictures given to us by the applicant. As you see, these are not big, heavy machines, but simply smaller, but of a industrial-type use in terms of a machine shop is really the best way to categorize it. Subject property storefront, used to be Action Printing. This is the view along Hill Avenue. The view on the property to the east, you see the Georgia Beer in the back, east wall of the building. This is the other part of the L-shaped building. As you see, the site and the parking lot need some TLC. Adjacent property, this is the office building to the west, the view looking west downhill avenue, and the publishing house across the street, and then the view the other way back toward downtown. This is conditional use, so Planning Commission found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the conditional use review criteria, as described in your packet, and they're recommending approval subject to three conditions. Number one, approval shall be granted for a light manufacturing facility and machine shop in the name of Omega Enterprises South LLC. That's the proposed tenant for this operation. In that name only, with no more than 15 employees on any one shift. All machining and other noise-producing activities shall be carried on entirely within the existing building. Number two, within one year after business license approval, the existing parking lot shall be weed-free and properly restored and striped to a standard commercial parking lot with layout as approved by the city engineer. Number three, conditional use approval shall expire after two years from the date of approval if no business license has been approved for the facility by that date. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions on this rezoning? Matt, thank you. Again, it's a public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request, please do so at this time. State your name.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's good to be with you again. Good to see all of you. I represent the owner and the tenant, which is Omega Enterprises from Indiana. They want to expand their business here and bring some more jobs to the community. And Matt has put some very reasonable conditions on there. I'd like to consider extending one of the conditions, and that condition is to pave the parking lot within one year. I'd like to do that in 18 months, and the reason why is this. Not only do we want to bring jobs here, but we want to save the city some money. In paving that parking lot, the biggest expense is to move all the equipment there to do that. And to the east of this building, between this building and the brewery, is this parking lot that you see, which is owned by the city. So, what we want to do is when we bring our equipment in to pave ours, we want to have time to work with the city engineer so that the city can pave their lot with our equipment when it's there, when it comes time to do it. So, it'll save the city a lot of money. So, we can live with a one year there, but it'd be just a little bit easier if we had 18 months to coordinate with the city so that they can put that on their budget, and we can do it all at one time. Other than that, we, I mean, we could go with what has been recommended.
Counsel, any...
And if you want to ask Brad some questions about his operations and what they do, he's happy to have it asked.
We were excited about the process. Any questions for Ron before I let him go?
Mr. Mayor, do we know business hours for this?
Brad, you're going to have to... Brad Dillingham, generally from 7 to 3 would be your first shift, and 3 to 11 would be your second, if we have a second shift. So, generally, that would be the cutoff, and the 15 people per shift is more than we definitely plan on. We don't plan on getting that big.
Counsel, any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you both. Is there anybody else who would like to step forward and speak in favor of this request? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Hearing none, seeing none. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make approval with the three conditions. Do we have to add the park?
Yes.
The safe being paved within what?
18 months.
One year as is.
But, but do we want to extend it to 18?
18 months.
Do we want to extend to 18 months? With the condition of 18 months, extend any of you to get that done, Mr. Borders.
I have a motion in front of us.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor? Show of hands. Approved with the 18-month window for the parking. Thank you, guys. Item C, consideration of an ordinance to rezone 0.945 acres from low-density residential to heavy industrial, as requested by the Valdosta Lounes County Development Authority. Property is at 1349 Old Stateanville Road. Matt Martin will again present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This, these next two requests are annexation and rezoning for the same property and, of course, by the same applicant. For public hearing purposes and discussion purposes, it is easier to take it all at one time under one hearing, but when it comes time to vote, we need to vote on the rezoning first and then the annexation. This is property located adjacent to what the Development Authority calls the Bassford Industrial Park, which has been marketed for a long time. As you know, a very large industry is in the process of moving to the existing M2 zoning that you see on the map. It's over 100 acres of land. They are in the process of including this property as part of that transaction. Development Authority purchased this property last year. They demolished the residence that was there. As you see on the screen, like we talked about at the work session, the other little parcel to the west, which is zoned RA in the county, Development Authority is looking at that one also. And the main purpose is to straighten and smooth out that boundary along Old Stateanville Road. Character area for the whole area on the north side of Old Stateanville is Industrial Activity Center. It has been that way since the beginning. Aerial imagery, you see some of the existing industries. The closest ones there are Steeda and Letica. You see Steeda Way with the cul-de-sac, and a couple tracts of land are what looks like a couple tracts of land, a vacant land. That is where the large industry is going. Zoom in of the one-acre parcel, it looks like this. It has wetlands area to the north, which is part of the natural buffer that the industry is wanting to preserve. Site plan in your packet shows the overall design pattern, and you see the major industrial part of the site, which is the building and parking lot, and railway access is all up at the north end along the Norfolk Southern Railroad yard. And you see that where the subject property is in relation to that. Subject property imagery looks like this. This is where the house used to be. Adjacent views, as you look down Old Stateanville Road, which is an unpaid county road, and then the other direction, the same kind of thing. And there's a few rural residential uses through the south on large lots across Old Stateanville. The industrial site behind the subject property, as seen from the south, as you peer through the overgrowth, looks like this. A better view of it, however, is from Steeda Way, cul-de-sac. You see the open land, and the industrial site goes to the tree line that's way in the distance. Big, large piece of land, soon to be home to a pretty major industry. Planning Commission reviewed both of these requests at their meeting on September 26. They found both requests consistent with the comprehensive plan, found the rezoning request consistent with the standards for exercise of zoning power. They're recommending approval of both of them to you. And also, as a footnote with the annexation, Lounes County has reviewed this as part of the requirement under state law, and they have no objections to the annexation. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions on this project? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item, so once again, anybody that would like to speak in favor of this request, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this request, please come forward at this time. And again, none. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sure I got this back. We're going to do these two motions together, rezoning and annexation.
We are not. They're separate.
We're not doing them separate. I make a motion to approve this rezoning of the first request presented by Mr. Matt.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comment, counsel? All in favor? Show of hands. Unanimous? Thank you. We'll move on to item D, consideration of an ordinance to annex that same 0.945 acres into the city of Valdosta, as requested by the Development Authority. And Matt Martin, you've already presented.
Mr. Mayor, I make a request.
What did you do? You got it. This is also a public hearing.
Right.
Anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this annexation, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this annexation, come forward at this time. And counsel, it is now yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a request that we approve this annexation of 9.5 acres presented by Mr. Matt. 0.945.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor? Show of hands. Excellent. Unanimous. Matt, thank you. Matt, come forward. Matt, come forward. Item E, consideration of an ordinance to rezone a total of 2.34 acres from single-family residential to highway commercial to all-community commercial. Zoning district as requested by Terramore Development LLC. And Matt Martin will again present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. As you see by the map on your screen and in your packet, it is split-zoned currently, mostly R6, with a little strip of CH zoning along the street frontage. It's at the intersection of Griffin Avenue and South Patterson. As we talked about at work session, the history of this property with the zoning at least goes way, way back to 1966 is when that CH zoning was put there. It has been there ever since. A lot of development in the older areas of town actually predate that, which is why we see some of regular zoning lines from time to time. This was a commercial tract of land that has been vacant for a very long time. Community Activity Center, of course, supports the commercial zoning and the commercial development of the area. Aerial imagery paints a little more detailed picture. You see the commercial development in terms of buildings to the north, the parking lot that exists on this subject property, but no more buildings. Survey in your packet shows the boundary lines. It shows some floodplain area that's on the south end of the site. That is something that gets addressed during the development review process. And you see the two properties as they relate to each other. Developer is for a proposed Dollar General store with their site plan as shown. Pretty good-sized building. I think it's 12,500 square feet is what they call a Dollar General market, which means it's a Dollar General and grocery store all under one roof. We do not currently have any of those in Louns County. This would be the first. Plenty of room for parking, maneuverability of trucks, two different points of access on different streets. They are very much aware of future intersection improvements at Griffin Avenue and South Patterson. And to that point, they have factored that into their proposed site plan. And of course, will have their construction schedule adjusted to whatever that intersection schedule will turn out to be. Building elevation, this is the prototype, as they depict it for a Dollar General Market store, which I think would be a very good addition for that part of the south downtown area. With all of that, this is a rezoning case, so Planning Commission reviewed this at their September 26th meeting, found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, the standards for exercise of zoning power there in your packet, and they're recommending approval of the rezoning to CC. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Matt on this project?
I just want to ask one question, Matt, and it's again about that entranceway. When we're coming to going north, you know where that little fork in the road is?
Mm-hmm.
Are they thinking about putting something like a red light or a roundabout or something? I'm just looking at when you're making that.
I'm not aware of the details of that new intersection. My guess is a traffic light. If not immediately, probably soon. City engineer can address those details a lot better, but that would be my guess. I mean, it's intersection of two state highways. And I would think perhaps that would be part of the design. If not, they'll probably design it such that it can be done easily in the future.
I'm just looking at that entranceway, because I was thinking it would go right off of Griffin Avenue, you would make an entranceway, but the entranceway is off of Patterson Street.
I think one of the concerns, and I'm not their design engineer, but if you put an entryway, it's also an exit. And coming out of the site to turn right onto Griffin Avenue and in a very short distance hit South Patterson, or coming out to try and make a left turn onto Griffin Avenue is probably something that's dangerous. And so they're just not even proposing that. Otherwise, I think they probably would have flipped the site so that the driveway's to the south end rather than the north end. But I'm sure for engineering purposes, they were advised to do it this way.
And counsel, I think the design that Ben described is that's a full-on right-turn lane at the top there, that you'll actually have to merge into that lane to take a right turn onto Patterson, the rest are the left turn onto South Patterson.
Going north?
By design. Again, that's not what.
That is true. It's right in, right out for South Patterson, because of the median in South Patterson. That is correct. So to go south on Patterson, they'll need to come out Young's Lane.
And the other two are to put you straight on and not have to look over your left shoulder on that. That's a tough one.
That is a tough one.
Any other questions for Matt on this project? Matt, thank you. Again, it's a public hearing item, so if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor of this request, please come forward at this time. State your name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Bill Nigel, 1007 North Patterson Street. I am here on behalf of the applicant, Terramore Development, who is my client. Healthy discussion on the roadway. There's a lot going on there. So I know the city engineer is familiar with this, has worked on it. Level Engineering is project engineer. Clayton Milligan, I believe, was going to try and make it. I don't know if he's here, but I'm sure if there are more questions about traffic, the city engineer can answer those. I will certainly try to as well. Again, this is a Dollar General store that will be developed a little over, around 12,500 square feet. It is a DG market, so there will be fresh produce and meats there, which will be great. There aren't many options, I think, on the south part of Patterson for that, so it'll be another option in that area. It's consistent with the surrounding land use, consistent with the comprehensive plan. It was unanimously passed by the Planning Commission, and we just ask that you follow the city planner's recommendation and the Planning Commission and vote to rezonate this to CC. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Nigel? It's an exciting project.
Thank you all.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition of this request? Excellent. Counsel, it's yours.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we do approve the request of the applicant for this. I think it's a nice project that will be coming down the way. I like the DG markets. I think it would be a wonderful thing. So I would like to make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Got a motion in many seconds. Any further comments? Again, this is a corridor that you guys have been focused on for quite a while, and it's just makes it even better. All in favor, show of hand. Unanimous? Counsel, thank you. Counselor, thank you. Item D, sorry, F. My eyes are terrible. Consideration of an ordinance to rezone 1.0608 acres from duplex residential to single-family residential, requested by Mack House Investments LLC. The property is located at 207 and 209 West Cranford. Matt?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is currently all-zone DR10. It's a subject property that affects all or part of four different parcels. It is in the Brookwood North neighborhood, which is a local historic district, and this part of it is a national register historic district. Subject property, you see the residential pattern, particularly on the east side of the Oak Street corridor. Everything in blue is DR10. And as we talked about at the work session, that is one of the old zoning districts from before the LDR. Think of it as R10 that also allows duplexes. The proposal by the applicant is to rezone just this portion to R6, which also allows single-family homes or duplexes, just a slightly smaller lot size than what's required by DR10. When you look at the zoning map, you see the other blue parcels as you go eastward down Cranford Avenue. Even though they are zoned DR10, they are actually R6 lots in disguise. They're 60 feet wide, they're 6,000 square feet. They would fit the R6 pattern, which is one reason why I think staff from Planning Commission have looked at the requests favorably, because you've got the single-family lot pattern already matching R6, but more importantly, the multifamily zoning and development across the street. Character area is established residential, which means only residential zonings are allowed here now. Aerial imagery, you see the urban forest of the lands. You see the apartments to the north. Subject property, in terms of the four parcels, has two existing historic single-family homes on them. You see them to the south of the subject property with the street addresses on them. They each face Alden Avenue, so they're facing that direction. It's a little more evident when you look at the survey of the properties. This is all four parcels together with the proposed rezoning kind of parceled out, but you see the rooftops of the existing houses. Everything else is vacant residential land, all owned by the same family for many years. It's been for sale for a long time, and we've had many inquiries on it, mainly for multifamily, which we have advised against. I think maybe the prices come down, don't know. We've got different interests coming through now for something other than multifamily. Subject property, a little closer view imagery. This is the moed yards, as you see it from West Cranford looking southward toward those existing historic homes, and these are what the homes look like. This is the one on the west. This is the one to the east as you go down Alden. This is the view looking eastward down Alden. You see the residential neighborhood. This is the view looking the other way at the Alden and Oak intersection, which has a traffic light. This is the next intersection to the north at the corner of Oak and Cranford. This is looking east toward Cranford Avenue. Little closer view down the street, you see they have some on-street parking going on. And then zoom into the entrance of that multifamily project that runs off of Cranford. Conventional layout, we covered this in a lot of detail at the work session. As it is zoned now, the area could be subdivided under a new replat using this pattern. All of these lots meet DR10 pattern, and they both, or this keeps the existing houses where they are, so there'll be no shifting of the houses. As you can see, most all lots, except for one, would be large enough to hold a duplex as it is currently zoned. That last lot in the upper-left corner, with just a few hundred square feet added to it, could also be done the same way. So under this scenario, it's seven duplex lots as it is currently zoned. If rezoned, or if the portion of it rezoned, you gain one lot. So that area along West Cranford, instead of three lots, goes to four lots, and that's limited by the street frontage. We talked about the mathematics at the work session, but then you go from seven to eight in terms of total lots. Here, even under the mixture of DR10 and R6, several choice between houses or duplexes is just one more lot. As we talked about at the work session also, the applicant is not necessarily wanting to do conventional replat and development, but is looking at some options to propose a plan development request at some point in the future. That's a more creative subdivision layout than what we have here. But because it's in the local historic district, the design of the layout and more importantly the design of the proposed houses must be approved by Historic Preservation Commission. So his next step in the process would be to go before them with his detailed plans and designs to get perhaps their blessing. And if that works, then come back to city council and the Planning Commission with a plan development request for something that has been pre-approved by HPC. So for the time being, the first step is the rezoning, really to go from what can be done now to what might be done conventionally in the future. And under any scenario, plan development is always a possibility. It just depends on the actual plans and design. But applicant is simply not to that point yet. With all of that, Planning Commission reviewed this case, which is a rezoning from DR10 to R6. At their last meeting, they found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the standards of exercise of zoning power, and they're recommending approval unanimously of the zoning change. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Matt? Pretty straightforward. Matt, thank you. Sorry.
I just want to make sure that we follow what we discussed on Tuesday with making sure that the trees and the canopy and all that stuff, make sure that we salvage, save whatever we can. I mean, I understand some of it will have to be removed in order for us to allow growth and things to be built, but I just don't want it to be mowed down. And also, you know, I guess when that comes back before us, we can also put some conditional use in there as far as like what trees to plant back and that sort of stuff.
Correct. Plan development, you've got the full palette of options in front of you based on a master plan.
And that'll come later.
A lot more freedom for conditions. And councilman, we had, or at least I had an email exchange with some neighbors earlier today regarding trees and the importance of them. And I immediately forwarded that email chain to the applicant and developer so they are aware of it.
Good.
And as we talked about on Tuesday, I've had conversations about that as well. I've not heard from the applicant, as mine are saying from tonight is he's out of town, but I'm sure he got my email.
Right.
So there'll be, I'm sure, future discussions about all of that. Either the tree survey has been done or it's in the process of being done anyway, because that's something he knows could affect his design layout, and that's good information for him to know earlier rather than later.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy, thank you. Matt, thank you. Again, it's a public hearing item, so anybody that wants to come forward and speak in favor of this request, please do so now. Mr. Nigel?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Phil Nigel, 1007 North Patterson Street. I am here on behalf of the applicant, Mack House Investments, and Avery Walden. Mr. Walden would be here himself. He is down in Florida tending to family members that were affected by the hurricane, so he's asked me to come and speak on his behalf. Yeah, this, to me, is a bit of a formality at this point. I mean, there's the request for the rezoning to R6 to fit in one more lot, so to speak. But when we, when the applicant comes back before the council, and I feel pretty good he will with a plan development plan, the layout's going to look entirely different, and I think it will be a lot more creative under a PD. Councilman Gibbs, to answer your question, I was at the work session Tuesday night. I did have a chance to address the concern about the trees with the applicant. He is in the process of getting a tree survey, and he is sensitive to those concerns. So he will take those under advisement and certainly address those with the councilmembers when we come back on the plan development. But this is, you know, it's a potential development that has a good bit of risk to it, quite frankly. I mean, there aren't too many people out there that would be willing to take a risk and buy these two houses that are there and keep them there and restore them. And, you know, we're going to have to go through the HPC and deal with all that, but the intention is to keep the two houses there that front Alden and then develop additional houses on the lots behind. So I am here to answer any questions you may have about the rezoning or the development. The applicant, Mr. Walden, did want me to pass around some, a booklet that he had put together just with some houses he has renovated in the historic district, so y'all can see what he has done. And I can personally say that, you know, I lived in Brookwood North Historic District for over a decade, and I personally got to see some of the houses that Mr. Walden renovated. And he really does an excellent job. And I think when you see these pictures, you'll understand what I'm talking about. So he's a craftsman. He's got his own construction company, and what goes here, I'm convinced, will look good and will be an asset to this city. So if I can, I'll start with Councilman Norton and just pass the.
Counsel, when he gets back to the mic, any questions for Mr. Nigel?
Yeah, the two houses that are sitting on Alden, they will remain, correct?
That's correct. And I mean, I don't think the HPC would allow those to be taken down. So the intention is that they will remain, and the applicant has planned for that, and his intentions are to renovate them.
Good.
Yeah.
I think we, I presented at the work session a couple of the proposed design ideas for the other house, and they look fantastic.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they're coming. There you go.
Look good.
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, it's a public hearing. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, I turn it over to counsel for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the mixed-use development on the property that is being requested by True North Companies.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further comments on this project? Seeing none.
Yes, rezoning.
Got a motion for a rezoning. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, show of hand. Thank you, counsel. Move on to item G, consideration of an ordinance to grant plan development approval of a mixed-use development on property that is split-zoned residential professional, conditional residential professional, and conditional community commercial as requested by True North Companies. professional, and conditional community commercial as requested by True North Companies. Matt, again, who's that?
Thank you, Mayor. As you described, and as you see on the map on the screen, there is a mixed zoning pattern here, three different zoning districts. You may recall some recent zoning, rezoning requests that affected parts of this property over the past couple of years. And the purpose in all of those really was to lay groundwork for what would become a proposed mixed-use development. There was a mixture of RP, which would be multifamily and offices, as well as CC, which adds a little commercial component and also a little higher-density residential component. All of that was done that way on purpose with the idea that conventional development is still a possibility. So we tried to execute those rezonings in a way that would protect us and be harmonious with the surroundings even under a conventional design. But what's before you this evening is the plan development request for mixed use with these three zoning districts underneath. Character area is Institutional Activity Center, and that's in association with South Georgia Medical Center and the BSU North Campus, which are both across the street. Aerial imagery, you see the subject property, which is still mostly vacant. There's a few buildings that have been built there, or one in particular in recent years. You see Mackey Park to the north, neighborhood to the west, and some very large institutional uses there to the east. Survey of the subject property shows the current parcel layout that really divides the development into two portions, a residential area and a non-residential area. Photos of the subject property, this is the view from North Patterson Street looking southwest toward its south property line, which you see is very heavily buffered. There's a large single-family residence on the other side of that that you simply just cannot see. This is the existing building on the site, which was originally built as a spec building from years ago in an effort to try and get a conventional office park going. This is as far as it got. The applicant, I think to their credit, is planning to keep this building and simply adapt it over to their use. With the residential component, this is planned to be the leasing office and the amenities building, community center and such to go with the apartments. Also an internal view, there's a retention pond currently in place that was put there for planned office park. However, the plan now is to do underground detention as part of their master plan. The land surface area for the types of uses they want to do was very valuable, and so that balances out the cost of going into underground detention. A closer view of that south property line buffer area, this is the western boundary of the property. As you look northward up North Tomb Street, subject property is behind that vegetation on the right. Remember, one of the zoning districts for RP conditional prescribed a 25-foot natural undisturbed buffer along North Tombs. We conveyed to the applicant that was very important to maintain, and it is reflected in their master plan, but this is how it currently looks. A little closer view, it is South Georgia Jungle with an emphasis on bamboo is the way, only way I know to describe that. Houses to the neighborhood of the west, they do not use North Tombs as their front street facing the houses, but it is simply for rear access to garages and driveways. On the north end of the property, there's a little notch cut out. That is not part of this request. That is the offices of the Valdosta-Lowens County Development Authority, which is an office use, fits in with the pattern, but it is on its own parcel and planned to stay that way. Mackey Park to the north of Roosevelt, BSU North Campus to the northeast across from subject property, South Georgia Medical Center at their corner at the traffic light where the parking deck is located, and then the master plan itself. These are all in your packet. I handed out some 11-by-17 versions of these at the work session, which for at least my older eyes are a little easier to read. But here it shows the two main components, a four-story residential building and what they call the residential amenity. It is 165 dwelling units, 215 bedrooms total, which if we do the math is about 1.3 bedrooms per unit. So these are relatively small apartments. They're not four bedrooms. The applicant in their long, three-page letter of intent described all this in great detail. They use the term resort-style amenities. Seeing some of their plans a little up close, the drawings look to be of that quality. Looks like something in a beach resort, a very nice place to live. I'm sure the rent will reflect that as well. They are not targeting college students. They are looking at young professionals, probably affiliated with South Georgia Medical Center as their primary audience, but a very nice development that is back off the road. They are separating out, at least by markings, the parking reserved for the apartments. And then you see a series of different commercial-type buildings along Patterson and Roosevelt. The mixture of uses of those are in that letter. They're also in the upper corner of the master plan itself, which I've zoomed in, enlarged. Copy of the enlargement is there in your packet. But here they go, building by building, describing the uses and the sizes of those different uses and a very carefully done parking calculation. My math is a little bit different from them. Technically, under the code, they have a little more freedom with the parking than what they're showing, but I'm very pleased to see that they've taken it literally and they have two spaces extra, even under their math. And I think that's a very good thing. I had challenged them in the beginning that parking was a very important part of any mixed-use proposal, and they've taken our recommendation seriously, and it all fits. Views of the proposal, this is the 3D-type view from the southeast looking northwestward over Patterson Street. You see a very nice four-story building. It meets all the requirements we have for multifamily, including the urban commercial corridor overlay district, which this is part of, which has architectural standards. It meets all of those. The other buildings in the front, here's a different view of the, really from the northeast corner looking southwestward, and you see the intersection there. One of the things we highlighted at the work session is their main entrance onto Patterson lines up with the traffic light that is right there at the corner of the SGM C parking deck, which is good design. Building elevations, which is actually more than just the building, these are actually the street elevations that show the apartment building that you see in darker tones in the back and how it would look with the non-residential buildings in front of them. So it's a full view of the whole site. And then in your packet, I don't think I put in the packet, I did put it here, this is just maybe our last look at part of the history of the property. Back in 2007, this had a plan development approval for an 11-story building. It was mostly offices. It also included a five-level parking deck. It would have been the tallest building in Valdosta. It was right on the eve of the Great Recession. This development did not happen, but I wanted to show you what was originally planned. In terms of comparisons, I think I put some of those numbers in your packet. Overall, what is being proposed now is of lesser quantity than this, but one of the more interesting differences, this was mostly all offices, and what you have before you is a mixed use that is mostly residential. So a little bit different plan of strategy and scenario, but I wanted to at least give you one last look at this from 15 years ago. With all of that, Planning Commission reviewed this at their public hearing on September 26th. They found it consistent with the conference of plan, also the plan development review criteria, which are a little bit different, and those are there in your packet. And they're recommending approval subject to nine conditions, which are also listed in your packet, and we can go through those in detail if you would like. But as you know, with plan developments, they often come with multiple conditions, usually in the form of tying it to the master plan. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Matt, other than the nine conditions? Questions, Matt, thank you. Again, it's a public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Please state your name.
My name is Clayton Milligan, 3998 Interperimeter Road. I'm here to represent the owners, True North. They're excited about this development. Matt did an excellent job of presenting it, so I won't take up any more of your time. But if you had any questions specific to the product, I'd be happy to answer them.
Said there was some urgency to get started. What does that translate to?
They are ready to, as soon as we can get plans submitted, which should be in the next couple of weeks, if this gets approved, they're ready to go to work.
Fantastic. We'd like to hear. Any other questions, counsel? Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this request at this time? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, I'll turn it over to counsel for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this request with the nine conditions as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous, counsel, thank you. Good luck with the project. Hurry. Item five, ordinances and resolutions. This is a consideration of a resolution authorizing the city of Valdosta to apply for the Georgia Department of Transportation's 5307 grant funding for fiscal year 2024. I have to continue our Valdosta on-demand public transit. Richard Hardy will present.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. That's correct. This is for the consideration of a resolution authorizing the city of Valdosta to apply for the Georgia Department of Transportation 5307 transportation grant to continue to fund our Valdosta on-demand. 2021 and 22, council approved the resolution for the city to move forward applying for the grant for 22 and 23. Thus, we're here today requesting another resolution for fiscal year 24. In order to maintain grant funding, the city must make application for a new 5307 grant each year. Staff recommends the resolution, the staff recommends counsel approve the resolution authorizing the city to move forward, requesting this grant funding. Glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Richard? Richard, have we eclipsed 500 rides a day yet?
We're in the middle. We're 450, 475.
Have a celebration when we hit 500.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Richard. Counsel, it's yours for motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution to apply for the grant.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous, counsel, thank you. Move on to Item six, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Consideration of bids for four traffic control cabinets for the engineering department. Ben O'Dowd, our city engineer, to present.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel.
Good evening.
As we discussed in the work session, each year, the engineering department makes an effort to purchase replacement stock in order to maintain our lighted intersections. This is a request to purchase four traffic cabinets. We budget each year for this expense. We budgeted $29,850, and we have seen tremendous cost increases. We received a sealed bid on September 13th, 2022, in the amount of $65,200, and I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Ben? Seeing none, Ben, thank you. Turn it over to you for action, counsel.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Move on to Item B, consideration of bids for LC controllers for that same engineering department. Ben?
Thank you very much. Similarly, these are also maintenance stock that we purchase each year. These are the specific controllers inside of the cabinets. Sometimes due to lightning strikes, electronic failures, or just age and fatigue, the controllers within the cabinet fail, and we need to be able to promptly replace them in order to keep our lighted intersections fully functioning. Funds were budgeted this year for $29,625, and we received sealed bids on September 13th as well. The low bid for the number of controllers that we need was $49,275. So again, seeing considerable cost increases, but not as significant as with the cabinets. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions about the controllers? Ben, thank you. Seeing none, I'll turn it over to you for action.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the bid as stated.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. We'll move on to Item seven, local funding and request, consideration of request for an RFP for Section 125, our cafeteria plan supplemental benefits. The city of Valdosta, a rare appearance by Catherine Ammons, our deputy city manager.
Good evening, everyone. So back in the beginning of summer, we put out an RFP for our Section 125 cafeteria benefits. Those are also known as ancillary or supplemental benefits and for informational purposes that can be vision and cancer and accidental and many, many more. So we received three sealed bids, and we invited two out of the three vendors to come and do an in-person presentation to the committee. And that committee consisted of myself, the city manager, our finance director, our HR administrator, and council member, Tim Carroll. After deliberation and presentations, the committee unanimously selected Taylor Insurance to be the vendor of our Section 125 plan. So the committee recommends that council approve the RFP of Taylor Insurance to provide ancillary services, excuse me, to our employees. I'll answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Catherine?
Excuse me.
Catherine, thank you.
Sorry.
Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Taylor Insurance.
Why, thank y'all for taking that up. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. It's unanimous. That closes out that part of the evening. We'll move on now to citizens to be heard. It's the portion of the meeting that we ask you to come forward and state your name and address so we may have it for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to counsel as a whole and do not attempt to engage individual members in debate. It's the council policy to follow through with you on your concern immediately. Additionally, we ask any groups that want to address the council designate a spokesperson for those same time constraints. Having said that, is there anybody that would like to come forward at this time, citizens to be heard?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm John Robinson of 327 St. Mean Circle of Lake Park. I've been here many times before. I'm here tonight to talk about and speak on the economic, economically oppressed and excluded. In this city, unequal opportunity for the low-income are suffering from economic oppression because of a bridge that was constructed in 1981 in the center of downtown Valdosta over the railroad track of racial socio-devise, thus creating a side of low-income, trend city, one of economic prosperity and the other plagued with poverty, excluded from the possibility of hope and sharing in the economic prosperity. The bridge literally cut the city in half. Sixty businesses failed due to the construction of the James Overpass on Patterson Street, which led to despicable housing and poor living conditions, contributing to dysfunctional lifestyles, creating drug-infested communities, gang activity, and our children murdering one another because they are excluded from the mainstream of economic prosperity, left with nothing but shattered dreams, no future to look forward. That's why we are taking the stand. All we are asking you to do is make a request for federal aid with a substantial, with a sustainable solution, one that will guarantee a positive change, not the social gathering of problems just talked about. We need money, a substantial amount. This city needs at least $250 million to even start the turnaround of the underserved. I ask for certain information by the open record request pertaining to the economic picture of this community of subjects. And your response was, and still very confusing, as if you were operating under false pretenses. Believe me, I'm not going to stop until justice prevail of the city's puppet, a purportary string is broken from the Larry Hudson administrative influence. I'm not here as a friend, but to clarify that I am your enemy if you turn your eye, if you turn your blind eye to the injustice that have devastated the entire community by the construction of this bridge. No, you don't have to like me, nor I like you, but we must do one thing, and that's face the truth. I'm sick and tired of being the second time. It's been 41 years, and no one has addressed these issues surrounding the various issues pertaining to the subject that I'm discussing here tonight. It seems like it was a deliberate design to oppress this side of the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and be heard at this time?
George Russell Rhimes, 50074.
George Russell Rhimes, five zero four, Valdosta, Georgia. You know, Mr. Mayor and counsel, it seems that Mr. Robinson come up here and he talks. Some of them may not take him seriously. But he's as serious as a lot of other black people in this town. He's just as serious as the white right people in this town. We all know that there's something wrong here. We can't put our hands on it. There are few people will acknowledge it. Blacks have served here on this council. They've told me behind the curtain what the problems are. I had white right people that serve on this council to tell me what the problems are. James Wright was one person who went public as a black elected official. And that's something that a lot of black people in the black community feel that the people that serve us often don't serve us. He had a public meeting and he talked about the unfairness in the banking industry. He talked about redlining. He talked about the CDBG grants and how it's not used as it was designed. This is not a figment of my imagination. I have all this documented through videos. He was sick and tired of what we call in the black community, the good old boy system. So I just want you all to think about it because if what Mr. Robinson is trying to do, if it is a failure, then Valdosta will fail. I rest assured with one hundred percent accuracy that Valdosta will change. For black people, Valdosta will change. It took fifty years, this is the court order, for school desegregation. A lot of people thought it would never change, but the Department of Justice stayed on this city and it was changed. The contracts, I don't know what it gonna take for blacks to get their fair share of the contracts even with DOT. Blacks that are not qualified, somebody must do something to get them qualified because there can be no real peace in Valdosta. You gonna continue to have meetings like the one you all had? Gonna keep telling black folk to raise their children? But you need to ask yourself a question. With the disparities in income, what in hell can they change when they don't have the money that's equivalent to the majority here in Valdosta? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Rhimes. Anybody else that wants to come forward at this time? Please.
Good evening, y'all. I have something on a little different, little different level, but it somewhat relates and it's about the good old boy system.
Yeah, please leave your name and address before you.
My name is Charles Judge. I live at sixteen sixteen B Victory Street in Remerton. And what I'm here to talk about is I have absolute proof there's a good old boy system and there's one called Ron Corbett. There's John Corbett's brother that you interview on the radio often. Ron Corbett assaulted me in twenty sixteen and I have been trying to get to court for all this time and I keep getting lied to by my lawyer. I went up there a little while ago just to find out if the last thing he told me was true. So we finally getting trial in January. Go up to the court, clerk of the court, there's no trials in January. I'm tired of being lied to. I presented this stuff to this body before you were the mayor and I've gotten the guy charged with felony assault. Actually, Paul's his buddy. They just hide it. I'm tired of things being hid. This is why black people think there's a good old boy system and prejudice. I would like to think that that's not the case. But from what I've seen, you certainly have a certain different level of justice system for those who's well-connected and those who are not. I can guarantee you, had I done to him what he done to me, I'd be doing half my prison term already by now. There was five witnesses at his own business that testified against him, his own employees, people I don't know or people I don't associate with outside of the workplace. And you know why he hit me? Because I quit on him. You know why I quit? Because I went there fighting all the time. And his first go-to, let me make something clear. When he hit me, he didn't come out so well hitting me. He won't do it again, I promise. But he had to go make up the N-word and say he hit me because I used the N-word. Five witnesses testified that was not true. I didn't go in there screaming at him or anything. He just was mad because he got his butt whipped when he jumped on me. And I done, when I went in there to quit, he started trying to fight and I left and he called me back from the truck. I want to call for FBI investigation. I don't think we're going to get anywhere like this and if I ever do go to get a trial, it's gonna be pre-prescribed and pre, only planned out what the outcome's gonna be. And I would like to get a FBI investigation into this because it clearly crosses into the realm of of what you would call a race crime. I mean, what's the invic?
What's your last name?
Judge, J U D G E. I'll be glad to show you.
Is there anybody else who would like to come forward at this time? Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Ella Peterkins. My address is twenty-five thirty-five North Ashley, apartment two fifteen. I just moved here to Valdosta, Georgia, leaving Tampa, Florida on some emergency type basis. I have some family here. I didn't research the city or anything about it before I left. I just came because I needed to. But once I got here, I moved in down in south Valdosta with my grandson and it was just a culture shock to me, actually. I didn't live in, you know, really expensive elaborate place down there in Tampa and everything, but it was just normal, everyday community and just, you know, peaceful, not a lot of crime all around and everything. Actually, it was in the non-assassin, which is the wooden part over. But when I moved here, the culture shock was that they were living in these little shotgun houses, straight through houses and all that, one bedroom. So we had to make arrangements for me until I can get stabilized and find someplace better. But everywhere around, there was nothing to do. The people, the young people there were just standing around getting high because, you know, when I would ask them, well, wait a minute, you know, my grandson is, he's got other issues, but he's relatively intelligent. And I would ask him, why aren't you, why aren't you doing something with your life? He's twenty-one years old. Why aren't you doing something with your life? Why don't you have any hopes? Why don't you have any plans? You know, why don't you, I mean, and he said to me that this is the South Side. They don't care anything about this side. You know, he said, we want to do anything, we have to go up to the north side or wherever and hope that we get accepted into whatever and everything. And I thought that's pretty sad because no matter what city a city is, it's only as strong as its weakest link. Anything is only as strong as its weakest link. And I thought that this cannot be the city of, the state of hospitality, they say, a good home, southern hospitality and could care nothing about its weakest link or the South Side. So this is something to be considered because as we live our own lives and we enjoy the things that we enjoy, it really is important to care and actually show that we care about those who need a helping hand, who need a little strength to try to tie their boots up. So thank you for hearing me today.
Ella, thank you.
Ms. Ella, what's your last name?
Pete Turkins with an S, K I N S.
Are there any other citizens, thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Good evening, councilmen. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
I provide at fourteen eighty-eight Ricardo Street here in the wonderful city of Valdosta, Georgia. Before I get started, I'm gonna make this real quick. I see the work that y'all are doing. Councilman Tully, Councilman Cody, we knowing y'all doing your best to bring more businesses to the South Side to help grow the South Side. So we know what's been going on and I'm gonna let that state as so on record that we do have some great officers in place that are doing what needs to be done for our city. However, I do have want to ask again for the moratorium, the street name changing to be lifted. More has, I came up here with a great speech and I was gonna wow y'all or why this should be done and I have decided not to. What should be done is the fact that our city should represent us. There should be no ifs, ands, buts about it, but I'm gonna tell you a quick story about another street that I pretend and we gonna move forward with West Gordon Street, which is the name of the John Brown Gordon, who was a Ku Klux Klan leader, also the state leader of the state of Georgia during that time, and also Confederate general. And it is in New Ford Street, this is a young man that came here from Texas, seen his family, but couldn't afford to work one job to pay for his apartment, all for Gordon Street. So he wouldn't got a second job. Lost his temperature, his transmission blew out, so he had to walk back for the work, working at goodies, family clothing, and also working at steak and shank. At this time, this young man noticed that he could barely make $475 on rent, working from two different jobs. So he decided the best thing for me to do is to go back to school. This young man went and signed up for school, was able to go to orientation at Valdosta State University and later on that day noticed that the food that he just bought, that he barely had, milk and cereal, was just stolen out of his apartment because his back sliding door was easy to pop open because all they had to do was open it up and lift the board that he was holding because it did not lock. So when this young man went out and confronted that person, this young man ended up being stabbed in the back by this guy when he turned to his face. This young man was in anger so he didn't know nothing what to do but to laugh. So when he gets to the hospital, the doctors come in and see him goofing off with the nurses and everyone else and turns to the young man and says, you know, oh, just sew him up and send him home. Forty-eight hours later, that young man came back to the hospital, swollen like he was nine months pregnant. Now, almost twenty years later, the young man stands before you to speak right now that we must lift this moratorium because not only does that street has a connection to grief to me, but it does have a connection that shows that the races that are still living on the ground.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Again, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Creation Divine. Born in Alita Menefee. I am here representing Hype, helping young people excel at ninety-eight Garden Drive A and ninety-eight Garden Drive B. I am here because we have experienced a misfortune. The organization was licensed in April of twenty twenty-one for ninety-eight Garden Drive A. In March of twenty twenty-two, we secured the other side of the building, which is ninety-eight Garden Drive B. We had one of our lieutenants to come out and look at the building to make sure our fire extinguishers and our exit signs were in compliance so that we could get our license for ninety-eight Garden Drive B. He had some issues with the boxing ring that we had there communicated if we were going to or having, if we were having illegal fights or having fights there and if we were, we had to go through certain protocol. I assured him we were not having any fights and we didn't do anything illegal. We're gonna go through the proper policy and procedure. We were licensed for Garden Drive A last year, twenty twenty-one, Garden Drive B this year. We requested a certificate of occupancy in May of this year and was told that we needed to send in our layout of the building, which I did. They came, Chief Klinkscale came out the next day to ensure that our measurements were accurate with the measurements that we sent in. They were. He then communicated that I would have my certificate of occupancy the following day by noon. He comes the following day about two o'clock and communicates that Chief Batwell stopped him from bringing our certificate of occupancy and that they were going to reclassify us from a business to a daycare. I communicated that we are not a daycare, so we've been going back and forth with this since May. I have also CC'd the mayor, the city manager. I spoke with our city county, city representative for that area. As of date, we still do not have a certificate of occupancy. We were told that we could not have it because we needed a fire submersion system initially, then we need a fire monitoring system and the extent of the fire monitoring system that we were told that we needed was for the whole building, but it's two separate addresses, which does not require that. We are in limbo, families are waiting, children are waiting, we cannot pay rent, we are threatening eviction right now and we need some resolve. So I'm asking if I could meet with counsel, mayor.
Creation, don't leave after the meeting. We'll, we'll, we'll see you in just moments.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Please come forward and state your name. Hi, John.
Howdy. I'm John Quarterman. I get my mail at three 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 eight Country Club Road Suite, LPMB three three six. You know, when they built I-35 through Austin, Texas, it ended up being known as the Berlin Wall because it split the black and Hispanic areas away from the rest of the city. So I understand what y'all are talking about, but y'all said it way better than I can. I'm here to talk about water. As the Salani Riverkeeper trying to keep waters clean. First of all, I'd like to thank the city, particularly I believe it was council Vivian Miller Cody and Andy Gibbs who were observing the committee that allocated the ARPA funds to nonprofits. That certainly helped make up the shortfall that, for example, we couldn't attend festivals because there weren't any. Okay, so thank y'all. And what I'm here to talk about tonight is that we've got an opportunity to bring in some grant money related to water. It has to do with, as you know, Valdosta tests six, actually seven locations, over forty river miles on the Witlicucho River all the way to Florida and WALS tests every Thursday, some other locations. And that's been very useful in discovering things like it turns out downstream, a lot of the contamination comes from cattle manure out of Brooks County. And we're currently investigating another case which we know there's a problem because it's in the Valdosta data at US forty-one and Georgia one thirty-three. Very unlikely it's coming from Valdosta. We've tested Cat Creek and Beatty Branch. There's definitely something wrong up there. We're following up. We're discussing with the likely sources and others. Okay, so all that would be a lot easier if all this information was in a place where it's more accessible to the public and to those of us trying to do something with it. Turns out there is such a place. It's called Know Your River. If you just Google for Know Your River, you'll find it, knowyourriver.com. Savannah Riverkeeper came up with this and they got it funded by seed grants from Georgia EPD. That grant program is now open and I'm basically suggesting that Valdosta could apply. WALS cannot apply directly. It's only government agencies can apply. There are some things that some of that funds could go to the city that might help. I can't tell you exactly. I believe your new utilities director is looking into that. A sizable portion of it will have to go to the contractor for Know Your Rivers and WALS needs a sizable portion as well for the work that we're doing. But it's a grant opportunity and I recommend that you look into it. I sent you a letter earlier. I'll distribute copies through your, over here. And if anybody wants to see the rest of the details, here's about twenty pages of the heart of the application so far. I'd be happy to show it to you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And we all have a copy. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard this evening? See if she's going.
Ms. Riley, ask that lady to wait.
All right, we'll close out that portion of the evening and move on to the city managers' reports. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to remind everybody about the Faith in Blue program that's happening at Gasana's Park. happening at Saunders Park this Saturday from 10 to 2. This is always a successful event, uh, collaborated with our police department, they do a great job. Last year was at Scott Park, this year's at Saunders, as I said, we try to move it around and give everybody an opportunity to participate, so, uh, please mark your calendar, uh, as it's fun, there's bounce houses, food, games, it's, uh, it's a fun time for everybody. Uh, and also, we've got a list of things that are, that are happening downtown. Friday evening is Friday, uh, after 5:00, it's called Wintersville Night, of course, as we know the football game is Friday evening as well, so, uh, Friday after 5:00 is 5:00 to 9:00, and that's Wintersville Night. Uh, Saturday on October 8th, following Friday after 5:00, we've got the Makers Market, which, again, I talk about it every time, it grows and grows and gets more popular, uh, with each event that, that, uh, downtown sponsors. We then have, on the, uh, October 13th, we have the Taste of Downtown Valdosta, which is extremely popular as well. So, uh, as you can see, there's a pattern here, every weekend, there's something happening downtown. Uh, October 27th is Tonight We Fly, which is night out, again, another successful event, uh, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. Then we have, on October 28th, we have Puptober. I always have to take a breath to say that. We have Puptober happening, because the pub crawl, the pup crawl was so, so successful, people loved it. So Brandy said, okay, let's re, let's kind of rebrand it, put it back, and let's call it Puptober, dress animals, your pets up in Halloween outfits, and bring them downtown, and all that fun stuff. So there's a lot happening there. Also, on October 27th, uh, we'll be sponsoring our Festi Fall, and if you guys remember what that was about, the first year, we were gonna do it before Unity Park was built, and it's where we had folks, kids can, uh, come out, we pass out candy through the departments. We're gonna have some little booths, some games, but rain delayed that. So, you know what happened? We just, we just lined up on Lee Street and, uh, had folks come in and just hold their bags up, and we gave them candy. Well, we blocked traffic to the Sunny Vickers Memorial Bypass. So, uh, last year, we moved to Scott Park, still same traffic. So this year, we're gonna go back to our original plan that we did the first year, now that Unity Park is, uh, ready. Each department's gonna have, uh, their own booth, we'll have games, giveaways, all that kind of fun things for families to do. Uh, kids can dress in their, their outfits if they want to, not necessarily, but they can if they want to. Uh, so I think that that's gonna be a fun time. It's, again, October 27th, uh, from 5:30 to 8:00, 8:00 PM. Friday, the 14th, the city of Valdosta will have Pink Out Day, so we'll all, if you come up here, we'll all be dressed in pink, and we invite mayor and council to do the same. Uh, that's on Friday the 14th. Today, we had a job fair over at the ANAX, and, and Jenny and the HR staff did a great job with this. This was a, an event that we had planned last week, uh, but we moved it because of the, the threat of Ian. Uh, so we had it today, and it was a great success. We've had, we had the different departments, uh, available, we had Public Works, Stormwater, Utilities, Engineering, Meter Reading, and we did 50 applications. Some of that were really onsite interviews as well. So we had a great turnout for that, for our positions open. So, uh, you know, we're gonna continue that, I don't know how often we're gonna do it, we haven't made that decision yet, we, this was our test, and, uh, but again, 50 applications and some of that being onsite interviews is really tremendous. So Jenny, thank you and your staff for that. And, uh, with that, you know, one, one, we, uh, myself and Councilman Carol go on to the, uh, what's that, Bill Osborne Show, uh, on council mornings. You know, I'm sitting there, I'm listening, going through the, the agenda for tonight, and, you know, it, it's, there's good things happening in our community. I mean, just look tonight with the zoning cases. We had some commercial, we had some residential, we had a new business coming on the South Side. So it is, we, we're, we're, we're doing, we're doing good, and I, I just always like to point that out, that it, it was a great mixture of, of, of tonight. So, uh, with that being said, I'll entertain any questions anyone may have.
Questions for Mark, we'll move on to council comments. No objection. Council, I'd like to lead off, just to kind of point out, and some of the things that are going on. Currently in our town, there are five Habitat Houses under construction. There is an amazing ongoing effort with our CDBG effort to rebuild and to raise and repair houses as well. Fantastic ongoing effort, but every time I take somebody on a drive on our city streets, south of town, east of town, west of town, that I can point out house after house, rehab house after rehab house, and new build as well. That Griffin Avenue corridor is something this council's very intentional about, south of town. It got, uh, the only ask in the legislative session was for a million dollars to expand South Side Library. We got it, to the tune of $900,000. It is currently under construction and expansion. We gifted another little portion of land to that, that effort, so they'd have extended parking. They park next to it, it just recently been renovated. South Georgia Medical Center jumped in as well, they now have Partnership Health housed in there, it's no longer just an occupational clinic, it is now a walk-in clinic as well. And the very largest, the largest of our ARPAP distributions, $3.4 million, is going to a fantastic rate-adjusted housing project. It'll get approval in November and be under construction in January, also on that Griffin Avenue corridor. And tonight, you sat and witnessed a private effort for a DG marketplace to also enhance that same corridor. Last summer, the summer prior, Scott Park got the largest investment that we put into a park in quite a while, in resurfacing the track and enhancing the playground equipment, and it has more to come as well. Every time I load somebody up, it's about revitalization in that section of town, so it's tough to sit here and listen during the course of this night, the gentleman we're saying, when they're oblivious to everything I just pointed out and more. A $21 million investment in Barack Obama Boulevard that will be coming in 2025 is already slated as a Tier 3 project for our TIA. $21 million to make it the prettiest stretcher road this entire town has, sidewalks and all, from Hill Avenue all the way to Perimeter. That being said, I'll let council have any other comments they want tonight.
I just wanna say, thank you for all of that, Mr. Mayor. My chapter and Ms. Riley's chapter, Alpha, Kappa, A, Alpha, Kappa, Alpha, Sir Roger will be hosting our Kappa and Omega Cluster Ford starting Friday evening. We will have over 750 ladies in Valdosta. They'll be staying in our hotels, they'll be using our restaurants, they'll be going into the mall. So if you see our ladies with pink and green on, introduce yourself to them and tell them you are part of Valdosta, make them feel welcome. If you see their car broke down, stop and help them. If you see they need any assistance, stop and help my Sir Roger sisters, 'cause they are bringing X number of dollars into our city. And again, our great, outstanding mayor will be doing the opening session Saturday morning as a welcome to the city of Valdosta. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to say that, um, I want to thank you for pointing out all the great things that are happening in our town and the things that we are focusing on. Uh, Mark, um, I do, if you could remind me, did we not give, um, Mr. Robertson a packet with everything broken down by district, as far as like where all the money's allocated and everything goes?
Yeah. His open records request, is that your?
That's correct.
Yes, yes, we did.
So we gave him everything he asked for?
And, and he did ask for one recently, and we, we gave, we gave him another one as well.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
I was thinking I had that packet.
Counsel, any further? Please.
Um, Mark, I'd like to make sure that, um, on that situation with Ms. Creation, I'd like to ask that you, um, update council on that, once you guys come with some resolution as far as what we decided with that, you know, with her, Ms. Creation?
Yes.
That just came out, I'd like to keep council updated on that.
We will.
I'd also like to thank our, um, police chief for enforcing our, um, well, I, I, let me, let me, let me back up. I'd like to thank her for making the announcement to enforce our state's curfew, because she didn't have to make that announcement. That's a law that's already in place, she could've just asked her officers to start enforcing it. But she decided to make that announcement to give the parents and the people in the community the ability to make themselves acclimated to that, um, to that law, to try to familiarize yourself with it. Now with that, I've heard different comments from the community. People say it's gonna be targeting people. There's only targeting people who are underage out after midnight. So if, if, if we don't wanna be targeted, let's make sure we have our young people in the house by a certain time. I like to also say, I hear people saying, the shootings happen during the daytime. Well, if we can get the guns off the street at night, maybe it won't be a shooting the next day. So let's start trying to find a reason to go against this. Let's help our police chief and our police department, keep our communities safe, so when people come up before us, they won't be able to say, all we have is certain, certain sections of the community that are getting high or stabbing or shooting or robbing. We want this community to be safe for everyone, and this is just a step that the leadership of our community decided to take to try to combat some of this, um, stuff that's going on. So I believe it's a step in the right direction, and I want to thank our police chief and the leadership of our city for, for, for enforcing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any further comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Show of hands. unanimous. I'd ask everybody to clear the council chambers, please. Thank you.
Mayor.